Next on our agenda, Jenny Kramer, Park County Planning and Zoning, Juarez Minor Subdivision 83 Final Plat Review.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just to note that the packet and all of the staff report and all the packet information was provided to you ahead of the meeting. And I will go ahead and summarize the findings for you. Delfino Juarez, on behalf of Juarez Real Estate, as the landowner, submitted a final plat application, requesting review and approval of the final plat Juarez MS-83, a five lot subdivision consisting of one three point, three point one five one acre lot, one three point five two acre lot, one three point five four acre lot, one fourteen point eight six acre lot, and one fourteen point nine five acre lot, each for residential use. And in approximately thirty five point six nine acre exempt for remainder parcel, the subdivision is classified as a minor subdivision. The property is in a GRP zoning district and the lot sizes as proposed are consistent with the zoning district. The proposed subdivision is located approximately one mile north of the city of Powell, on the west side of County Road 10, and the south side of County Lane 7. Neighboring land uses are a combination of ag residential and residential vacant lands. A public hearing is not required for final plat review and public notices are not required. No new agency responses have been received since the Board of County Commissioners sketch plan review. No public comments have been received. You as the county commissioners reviewed and approved the sketch plan on June 4th. The applicants have provided sufficient easements and identified them on the final plat. They have provided written consent from all adjacent landowners that a perimeter fence is not necessary. They have placed the appropriate notes and conditions on the final plat regarding permitting requirements for wells, the presence of high groundwater and the potential for required engineered septic systems in the Wyoming Right to Farm and Ranch Act of 1991. They have provided an approved water distribution plan. And they've provided an approved long-term noxious weed management plan as required. The plat review committee reviewed the final plat. Minor changes and corrections were identified and a revised final plat was submitted to our office. Applicable final plat specifications have been met. And supporting documents have been submitted as required. And a subdivision improvements agreement is not required since no applicable improvements are proposed or incomplete. Staff recommends approval of the final plat of Juarez MS-83, subject to a couple of conditions. And we wanted to potentially recommend striking the first condition as was provided to you, it's regarding easements. And that was actually a condition of sketch plan which was met, all of those were placed on the final plat. And but instead of that to put in kind of our standard condition that gives guidance to the applicant as to the final step. So that would read, we would recommend, condition number one, the applicant in the presence of a member of the planning and zoning department staff shall record the final plat and all required final plat submissions in the office of the county clerk and recorder. And two, the applicant shall otherwise comply with standards and the Park County Development Regulations. And the minimum subdivision requirements is set forth in Wyoming Statute 18-5-306.
So if I understand you correctly, those are the two conditions now, we are replacing the condition one we have with the condition one you just read.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So it's not a public hearing, it is just a final plat, are there any questions for staff from the commissioner?
Madam Chair, move to approve the final plat for Juarez Minor Subdivision 83 with the one staff recommendation.
Second, commissioner, can you? A motion in a second to approve Juarez Minor Subdivision 83 final plat with the two stated conditions. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
When opposed? Questions, passes? Thank you. Next on the agenda is amended plat, are you expecting any other? You're not expecting any other public to be here for? Next thing on our agenda is Jenny Kramer, Park County Planning and Zoning, amended plat of Giants Simple Subdivision 313, Lot 1 and Lot 2.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colby and Cody Giants, the owner of Lot 2, submitted an amended plat application to request approval of a boundary line adjustment between Lot 1 and Lot 2 of Giants SS-313, resulting in the vacation of the original designs of Lot 1, originally three point eight three acres, and Lot 2, originally thirty one point one eight acres. And the reconfiguration to Lot 101, which will become eight point eight three acres, and Lot 102, twenty six point one acre lot. The original plat of Giants SS-313 was approved on October 11, 2023, by Board of County Commissioners. Tina Graven and Kurt Graven are the owners of Lot 1, and Colby and Cody Giants are the owners of Lot 2. The subdivision is located approximately five point two miles southwest of Powell and one point four miles south of Brawston, on the north side of County Lane 14 and the east side of Jocelyn Lane. Lot 1 is developed with a permitted residence, septic system, and outbuildings. Lot 2 is developed with a permitted barn and septic system. The subdivision is in the GRP zoning district. And the proposed lot reconfiguration is consistent with that zoning district. Since the proposed lot configuration change is a partial vacation, an amended plat is required. The planning director determined no public hearing is necessary because the change does not appear to compromise or aggravate the rights and privileges of other lot owners of the subdivision. Or other lot owners. Agency referral requirements have been met and responded as follows. Park County Public Works had no comments. Damon Fish had no comments. The Park County Treasurer's Office confirmed property taxes are paid. The property is covered by an existing long-term noxious weed management plan with the original subdivision, therefore no further action is required for the amended plat by Park County Weeding Pest. Willwood Irrigation District has been in contact with the applicant and a water distribution plan will be required and is currently under their review. The lots are located within an ag overlay district, no public comments have been received. The plat review committee reviewed the amended plat and a revised amended plat was received by our office. Since there is separate ownership of the vacated portion of the plat, instruments shall be recorded conveying ownership of the new individual lots as reconfigured resulting from the amended plat. And the amended plat meets the requirements outlined in Chapter 3, Section 15C of Park County Regulations. Staff recommends approval of the amended plat of Giants SS-313, Lot 1 and Lot 2, subject to the following conditions. Number one, prior to recording the amended plat, the applicant shall provide an approved water distribution plan to the Park County Planning and Zoning Department to be recorded with the amended plat. Number two, prior to recording the amended plat, the applicant shall provide ownership conveyances of the individual lots resulting from the amended plat to the Park County Planning and Zoning Department for recording immediately after the amended plat or if closing at a title company is required for the land transaction to be recorded upon closing. And number three, the applicant shall comply with the standards and the Park County Development Regulations and the minimum subdivision requirements is set forth in Wyoming Statute 18-5-306.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Please approve, Madam Chair. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amended plat for Giants Simple Subdivision 313, Lot 1 and Lot 2. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
When opposed? Thank you.
Interested in some of the audience, so.
Are you expecting anybody other than? Okay. And the next thing on our agenda is Rock River Estates Minor Subdivision 84 Final Plat Review.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll summarize the findings. David and Debbie Vardman is applicants, on behalf of Jeremiah and Rachel Vardman, as landowner, submitted a final plat application requesting approval to split a one acre lot for residential use from an existing hundred and two point zero two acre parcel. The subdivision will result in an approximately hundred and one point zero two acre remainder parcel. Subdivision is classified as a minor subdivision. It is located in a GRP zoning district and the lot size is consistent with the zoning district. The subdivision is located approximately three and a half miles southeast of the city of Powell, on the west side of County Road 5, north of County Lane 11 and a half with an address of 1104 Road 5 in Powell. A residence and small wastewater system are proposed on Lot 1. There's a residence, accessory structures, small wastewater system, and well on the remainder parcel. Alkaliwell Canal bounds the property on the southwest, on the south and southwest, and the topography is relatively flat. A public hearing is not required for final plat review and public notices are not required. No new agency responses have been received since your review of the sketch plan. No public comments have been received. The sketch plan was approved by you, the board, on September 17th with conditions. The required easements and notes have been shown on the final plat. The applicants have addressed shared maintenance of the driveway and a shared driveway maintenance agreement. The applicant has provided written consent from all adjacent landowners that a perimeter fence is not necessary. And the plat review committee reviewed the final, or the draft of the final plat on September 27th and a revised plat was submitted to our office. Applicable final plat specifications have been met and supporting documents have been provided as required. Separate easements for access and power across the remainder parcel to benefit Lot 1 will need to be recorded with the final plat. And a subdivision improvements agreement is not required since no applicable improvements are proposed or incomplete. Staff recommends approval of the final plat of River Rock Estates MS-84 with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant in the presence of a member of the planning and zoning department staff shall record all required final plat submissions in the office of the county clerk and recorder, including separate easements for access and power across the remainder parcel to benefit Lot 1. And number two, the applicant shall otherwise comply with standards and the Park County Development Regulations. And the minimum subdivision requirements is set forth in Wyoming Statute 18-5-306.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Because we're so far ahead of schedule, Madam Chair. Condition one, I know that, I know the reasoning, how does that work? You know, where staff have to be there, is it hold up any?
No.
When the person comes in, do they have to make?
Special arrangements or anything?
Arrangements ahead of time, or I mean, it'd be nice, I suppose, if it doesn't hold them up.
No, we have, you know, we do typically ask, I mean, we usually, of course, work pretty closely with the surveyors or usually who's getting all that information to us, so once they submit the Mylar, we, you know, work with Dossie to get that signed and then we're ready. So we let them know, hey, you know, Dossie will be in tomorrow. It should be ready to go tomorrow afternoon, do you guys have a time or?
So what, they call ahead and you have to run down to the clerk's office and what, I mean, just almost?
No, they usually come up and grab it, we would just walk over, you know, just walk down together and yeah, and a lot of times, a lot of times if there are questions or say a notary stamp was missed, or something, a lot of times I think it actually saves some time just because we can answer any questions or get things sorted out. But the way you sit out there too. Yeah. Yeah. Right, and then it doesn't get held up because someone's like, oh, we still need, you know, this, so then we've got to call and get people back in and.
Well, I was curious how it was working because we didn't used to do that. I understand, and that's why I'm trying to wrap my head around how this worked prior to doing this. There must have been evidently reason for why we're doing it and less than some of the mistakes or or the lack of communication for that some of these conditions needed to be put further.
Sure, yeah, a lot of it had to do with, you know, they wouldn't, even though everything might be together and conditions that were a water distribution plan and a long-term noxious weed management plan needed to be recorded. A lot of times those would just, they just wouldn't end up recording them, they wouldn't end up taking them all the way to the clerk's office for some reason.
I know, and that's good, I reading it sometimes I think, all right, why the hell do we need to hold their hand to come down and do this?
What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I move to approve, am I wording correct? River Rock Estates Minor Subdivision MS-84 Final Plat Review.
Second.
Ask presented which condition?
I have a motion in a second to approve River Rock Estates Minor Subdivision 84 Final Plat Review with conditions. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
When opposed?
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn with a second, any discussion? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As you all know, we have a work session with planning and zoning in our.